We're at the 6 o'clock hour. We open the meetings for the Bethel Wood Selectmen, August 6th, 2018. Call the order and we'll have our usual citizen forum if there's something that's not pertinent to the agenda as written. If somebody has anything they would like to expound on. Brand, way back there.
Thank you. I had talked with Scott about lowering the speed limit on Loop 5 and I wanted to kind of just explain to you why I asked the town to do this. It's because, first of all, there's a bike trail going in just beyond Mountain Sweats, which is just past my house. And there are nine houses from the crossroads here on Loop 5. And it's dangerous for older people to get out of their driveways. There's not, they're older homes and they've been there for a long, long time. And I had talked with Scott and he is going to pursue it, but I wanted you to ask me some questions, if you have any, why we want this done, and so on. So I thought this was a great time to come and speak with you. And I also understand that there's businesses on Loop 2 from the swing of the Bethel Auto Sales that needs to be addressed. Also, I agree Scott said that they were looking at that as well. We need to follow up on that, folks. And we also need, and I don't mean to be rude to anyone, I don't say our Sheriff's Department is doing a bad job because I don't think they are, but we need more enforcement. If we're going to bother to lower these speed limits, we need it enforced. And we don't just mean once every other month. We need it to be enforced on a regular basis, starting on Loop 2, follow up on Loop 5. And if that bike thing does go through to connect all the trails together, kids are going to be using that trail. Kids are going to be using that trail. And we need to be very cognizant of that because we don't put a price on anybody's life, but students on bikes crossing that road on that particular area. I just want to be clear on that. We really need to pay attention to both of those areas of my opinion. And I was told that I needed to write a letter. I did that. I've talked with Scott and he's already on top of it and I know he is, but I wanted you folks to know why I did that, for all the right reasons, I hope. And thank you very much for listening to it.
One taken.
I'm brand new and you and I just met?
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that the state of Maine sets the limits. You know, they ultimately have the ability to set the limits. The towns don't do that unless they have an engineer on staff and obviously Bethel doesn't. So what they, I think what they would do with my experiences is that they would come to town with their book, with, and it's loaded full of criteria that they would look at and do a study and see if the speed limits could be adjusted.
Adjusted, yeah. That's exactly what they told Scott, but I was told that I needed to address it with the town first, so here I am. And I really feel out of it about it and I will follow up with the state. The safety inspector has been out there with me once already. He went all the way to Songo Park and he said, "This road is a dangerous road." But again, we can lower the speed limit, we can put it down to 25. If we don't have the follow-up for enforcement, then it's a waste of everybody's time. So that's another valid point I really feel needs to be. And again, I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, I know they're busy, but this is important.
All right, thank you. Okay, move on to approval minutes. Approved minutes of meeting held July 2nd through July 16th, 2018. Move consecutive to us. Any discussion at all? Here in nine, all in favor? Okay, public hearings. We'll open a public hearing on vehicle license renewal, crossroads diner. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor? Okay, we'll move on to open a public hearing for liquor license renewal. We'll begin. Anybody in the public here, anything to offer on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the board. Move consecutive, all in favor?[585.12]
They would have gone through this engineering process for this building without knowing what the soil was.
If we're going to get blindsided by all of this now, after we've already approved almost a half million dollars of funding for the project, and now the taxpayers in the end get hit further to actually make it happen.
It's the ratepayers, it's not the taxpayers.
Oh.
Right.
We're just going to try to time out these.
What's a ratepayer?
The one that uses sewer.
Yes, right.
Yeah, Don, can I ask you a question if either you or Christine or perhaps Rick knows where the town of Bethel falls on a scale in the state as far as rates and fees, where we rank?
I certainly don't know.
I don't know the exact rank, Rick. I do know when I spoke to Bobby prior to her giving me these numbers, she did an analysis of all the surrounding communities to see where we fell because that depended on what we would get for funding. That's how she came up with that number.
And she's a person from the fan?
She's, yes, she's from RD, yeah. Yeah, she's the head, well, Scott Emery is, but she takes care of all the numbers for Scott, so, yes.
And what did she come up with?
If we borrowed 700,000, we'd get approximately another 500,000 in additional grant money.
But you don't have comparison how our fees rank in the state?
No, she didn't give me that detail, no.
So we could be like first or second in the state?
All I remember her saying was we weren't comparable. So, now whether she's using cubic feet and analyzing it that way, she had to have all of our financials from the audit for the sewer plant, so I don't know what those numbers are, how she works those.
Do we know what our average ratepayer pays right now?
It's really high.
Do we have an average really high now?
159 is the minimum.
159?
But then they pay on the usage based off of the. So it's, so 158 a quarter?
Okay, any other commentary?
What was that part you just did?
So, do we have 1.2 million dollars worth of funding for this if we still can't get it done? Is that?
We don't have much.
No, you said 700,000 applied for within the state and that got us an additional 500,000.
We have, we have some grant money left.
Okay. How much did we originally get?
I think the first grant was 600,000.
But we had to borrow our money.
We had to borrow money first, then certain amount of money.
So we got 600,000 and then we added some of our own money on top of that. How much money has gone into this?
That was on Burn Street.
That was for the Burn Street upgrade pump station down there.
It's a very complicated.
We're talking about like a million or more dollars though at this point, right? So yeah, like 1.2 million.
Did he have 20 years of this?
The way I understand this is we have about 900,000, potentially if we got this possible grant, that would be 900,000 grant money. And we're looking at another six, almost 700,000 that we need to come up with, we need to come up with on top of the grant money. We only have 400,000 of grant money guaranteed, right?
Well, that's what we had, that's what was left over.
And as I may note to you guys, essentially that 400,000 has expired. RD has just been very gracious to us in keeping it on the books. We should have actually lost that amount.
And some of these upgrades need to be done.
They have.
Out of like OSHA necessity or DLS necessity, I guess, but what's the, what's the de-watering? A big part of this building is that press, correct? So how much of this is, my concern is that press has not been very impressive to me, I guess, at least just moving in.
I've been a lot happier with the results since we've been running over that 30 gallons.
What happens if that breaks? Or what happens to the?
Well, it's like any piece of machine, we have to fix it. You know, I don't.
And or go back to the old system?
Well, the old system could be a backup, uh, that we really worked down for a long time. Uh, one of the things that goes on there is we want to keep us, I need to keep my solids in before we down because with this tank, it's, I can't use where the buildings are low, they go off, you know, 180,000 gallons of storage. So last winter I had a really tough time with it. Uh, so right now we've worked down with that I saw it sitting there down. Do that as long as I can. I'm not going to have the building anytime to do it in the winter, I don't think at this point, but. So the machine would have to be minimized and sit there idle all the time.
Yeah, just, I work down there, I don't know if everyone knows that, so I'm here to see how that could impact me eight hours a day for the next eight, 10 years. One of the interesting things is that if there's limited funds, I think we have to look at life safety number one and number two to EP compliance. One of the employees fell through the rotten deckboards and into tank digester number one, not too long ago. That's, that's a very dangerous situation that we've been aware of for a long time. Number two, we're running off of one influent pump right now because we have a BFD problem as well. So, so that's a priority as far as getting that working and, and being able to use that in an automated fashion. The other thing I haven't heard is any discussion over the leaky roof that's leaking water or diddling water into our electrical load center. So there's another 20, 30,000 dollars that hasn't hit any of this. So I think if we're going to look at life safety, DEP compliance, we had a discharge in January that may or may not have been prevented by extra space or extra billing or extra de-watering. Right now, we only de-water on sunny days. We have to shut it down if it's raining. We can't run it in the winter. It sat all last winter. And we shovel off the roof and we took care of it. Those are things that have to be considered. I think it all boils down to two questions. Can the ratepayers handle an increase, number one? And number two, how did we get here to this point without a building and a de-watering system? That's, that's all I can say to it, is we've got to focus on life safety and DP compliance first. The building, I'd love to have a building for the record. I think it'd be wonderful. I have a shiny new building that might help us run year long. And I'm all for a building, but I don't know if the ratepayers can handle it and I don't know.
How specifically have we approved all this funding for some sort of new facility that we haven't even worked off the ground? And these sort of problems are actually even still happening? And that raises a lot of questions within itself, and I guess I wasn't even truly prepared to speak to any of these aspects. But that raises a lot of questions as to what potentially is going to happen.
Certainly, certainly have the handbooks and they're always will be when it comes to, I think, the sewer plant is something that we have to have, it's mandated, you know.
You just said about somebody who fell through a rotten floor and ended up.
They didn't fall, they could have fallen, but it was.
Well, that could have, would have, should have. That's horrible.
It is bad, that's why we're here.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Any more discussion here on the board?
Uh, I'm just going to say I'm, I'm not going to vote to, to spend this money. It's a tough one. It's because we spent a lot of money and I, you know, I would rather see this money just refocused. I don't, you know, I don't know what the rules are with this 400,000 dollar grant. I would rather.
We got discussion here.
I would rather go back to RD and say, can we use this for some essential upgrades? And let's fix some of the problems we have to fix first and then work from there, that's what I, I'd rather see this do. We're, I mean, that's a, I bought a house that didn't, was not on the water and was not on the sewer because I didn't want to pay the rates. You know, and I'm just barely off of the water out there, I believe. And that was done on purpose, so, you know. Somebody asked earlier the difference between taxpayer and ratepayer. Um, taxpayer, you live in Bethel, you pay the taxes, you have to, you have no choice. Ratepayers pay separately on top of that. So they pay all the same taxes and then they pay their sewer rates. This burden is only sent on to them. It's not sent on to those of us that are like myself, who don't live on the system.
That is a choice that the board can take to the voters, so.
Right, and that's, that's something I consider and I think we should consider down the road. Although that will probably drastically unpopular.
And potentially a very time-consuming process that doesn't actually fix any of the problems associated today.
I just thought when you say the, the loan, sure it is guaranteed, but the full face and credit of the town. So, some areas, some choose the crucialist votes for the town because they're backing it up, they're pledging to pay back if the ratepayers.
My sense, we wouldn't be opposed to putting it through. I'm not going to, I'm going to vote now for this for now.
Christine, you certainly were the one involved with the, the whole RD thing, perhaps more than the rest of them. Is there any going back now to change the structure or anything?
Uh, we would probably spend only 100,000 dollars to start the rebid process, new engineering and whatnot. Uh, they could probably use some of the old stuff that they have already engineered for this building, send out to rebid process. You're going to have to have approval from RD again. You might end up with 250,000, probably 400 by the time everything's changed over.
Just to speak on that, I mean, a new bid process and potentially spending another 100,000 dollars on a new bid process. If the, the process that's placed costs us 400,000 more than anticipated, that 100,000 on a new bid process is still 300,000 less than the existing process. I don't know. I feel that we should actually fix the problems that exist and if getting this passed helps fix that, I would be all in favor of that.
Well, again, if we're not going to proceed with the building, and this has to be engineered, we're going to have to repair this other tank. It's an easy 60,000 dollars, plus the financing, uh, which is, if that's the avenue you go, but that, I'd push the issue with EP on that for a long time, weeks, you know. I've used it in emergency, but they, they don't want it to, uh, so. Then, then you've taken away the spot, the whole place, the house, and then you get bid.
We're going to spend 60,000 to replace that tank, then in two years, the side you're going to move forward with the building there, you're just wasting 60,000 dollars.
But we're not using the tank now.
I need to use it. I don't have the space.
He uses it only in an emergency.
EP has been pretty decent.
So is there an option of making this, replacing with a smaller tank that's more appropriate, the size for the usage down there? And then weaving some space for a, maybe a building that's maybe a little bit smaller.
I think you'd spend a little more than 60,000 dollars if you had a small skewer.
Well, guys, we are where we are. Oh, yeah, other questions?
So if, if we put this to the, to the town to vote on, um, and they say, let's do this, are we going to have to go through this process all over again?
Well, first of all, that was not voted to the town. You guys are the trustees of the sewer. You will take care of this.
Okay, so this doesn't go to the town to vote?
No, what you would take to the voters would be something similar to what we did with 158,000 dollars loaned to them for Chapman Street. The town would say, yes, we'll give them 200,000 of our tax money, put it on our tax bills. So it would get added to the assessment to go out. There are other towns that have done that in the state. Some of them have offset by saying, well, the non-rate users will give you one free pumping of your private subject every five years. As a, as a premium, I guess, for helping the users intact.
Right.
Um, there are other ways you can maneuver that. Some towns, they say, yes, we'll, we'll back them. Ultimately, they're responsible anyways if the users can fall.
And I can tell you from experience, we've had this discussion a number of years ago, that someone brought up the idea that the town's going to help, the town in general is going to help the sewer department. If you, uh, if you want, if you want to fill this room to capacity and go into the street, we, we can put that out there. And I can tell you, it didn't work then.
Now Randy said that there are major issues. How much would it cost to fix those major issues?
If we fix that rotten deck, there's a lower building on there that's rotten and it's going to, always we're going to get relocated in the new building. And that building doesn't have to be replaced. Right now, there's nothing up to code, you know, we need electric. We just have, we have to get re-engineered. Anything we borrow with RD, that's what I find the important. Beyond what you spoke and what we already have, unless it's exactly the same thing, it'll probably have to be re-engineered and rebid. We could redo the whole project and see if it comes in less, which would be 50,000 dollars.
And the way the bid was this time was a lot more than what we expected, so that means the next bid could be twice as much.
Hardly as 12.
There was seven or nine bidders at the pre-bid meeting, and what did you get? Two bids?
Two bids.
There's just too much work out there. They can name their price tags.
Yep.
Eric, so if it looks like the board is going to vote for this, and am I understanding correctly that you have the option perhaps sending it out so that it could be spread across the tax base as opposed to just the ratepayers to pay back the money? Am I understanding that right?
That, that would go to vote.
So like the 158, that was, that was spread across. So is it possible to do something similar to that in this situation? Because the ratepayers, I mean, you said an increase of 72 dollars per, per, is it per year, per year?
Per year.
It's already hot. Yeah, it's already, I mean, I have property both in and out, so I, I feel both ways, so. I just thought, I don't know if that was something that the board would entertain or not.
Ready for a vote?
Does that motion encompass just passing 18 dollars per quarter along the ratepayer or does it just get us the next step?
Get us.
So then we can, okay, yeah.
That was simple calculation, Derek. It, after the inventory, it could be nothing. I don't know.
That's good thinking. I like that.
Depends on what happens with the inventory.
Okay.
The, uh, I complicated the discussion. I didn't mean to, uh, all I was saying is the town sometimes guarantees the loan. There's no, they don't put, the taxpayers still don't pay for sewer usage. They just guarantee the loan. In case the users should have to default, but we all know in this moment that they never will, but. But what I was, if the board has thoughts about not taking a positive vote here, I think while you're sitting here, we have to, we're lucky enough to have you still here. Perhaps you summarize for them what that means? What, what doesn't happen if they don't get ahead to the project? They need to know that side as well. And they know the real negative side of moving ahead is a lot of money. What's, what's the negative side of not voting?
Obviously, you have a lot of machinery down there that needs to be repaired at some point. They'll start having breakage. Uh, personnel safety down there is, is a lot of priority by all means. I've told them not to go out by themselves on the walkway. You need to put it time. And if you don't do this, that 400,000 we have left, it's gone.
It disappears.
It disappears. That was your grant money left over. You already did all your old loan money. Their holden is, it should have expired last fall. Their holding is knowing that we were working on this project. You have an opportunity now because, first of all, this is people that have not used their money across the state. It's now back into a pool. So you have this option of possibly getting a half million dollars with this loan. You may not have that opportunity the next time, depending on how much money you have available. So there's a bunch of factors.
Yeah, and again, we're in a, we're in a contractors world right now. They, they simply know, they know what our needs got.
So in your opinion, with the money that you have remaining, additional grant money that you'll get, if, while the bid went what you had hoped it would be, it's still the best alternative?
Unfortunately.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor? Both. Oh, well, Peter's not here. He's left, well, that's a lengthy discussion. He spent, uh, what, roughly? Almost a day yet.
Yeah, we all walked around and seen.
Again, I try to understand exactly. It's actually a good, good choice, I think. Okay, so I guess we pass that. Okay. I didn't see the stuff that's surrounding the possibility of marijuana referendum, but remember a ballot. There's a cost.
First report, if we do have a referendum, we're going to have to rent a machine because of ranked choice voting. We can't give you back the state machine, which is 12,000 dollars. Ballots, I didn't know the length of your question, so I estimated a little high for ballots, so 1,000 dollars. That's going to be close because we'll probably need about 2,000 ballots. Last gubernatorial, we did about 1,500, 1400, 1500 voters, so I'm assuming this is going to bring a lot more people out there. And then our media rental and coding is about 420, so it's going to be about between 25 and 3,000 dollars to, to have a referendum question. And I'm not sure if they have the machine available to rent. If I had known, I would have kept my machine in June, but if I know, I sent it back. I'm supposed to let her know tomorrow, and they're going to see if they can do that machine.
So we're not guaranteed the machine?
No.
I guess that the question, uh, again, I know there are a lot of questions, because we're a lot quiet as, why is this, this department been through, uh, committee work and marijuana committees and everything. The, the real explanation is probably not good, other than Christine has asked the town attorney a couple of times about, a couple dozen times probably about how we can, can handle this. We got to a point where we assumed in one of the, the, the laws that came down, when you read everything, the interpretation that we got was that we were going to have a up or down the road. We could do that in November, you could say, in, in effect, how the dry or wet, the phraseology, we would want all of the associated, uh, businesses that, that went with marijuana and marijuana processing, well, you wouldn't. Uh, when, when that was ultimately flawed, that, no, that's not what you're going to do. Uh, what the advice was that we got was that you're going to produce ordinances or inordinances that, that covered everything. People asked questions after, after that about, well, other towns did certain things and why, why do we have to produce ordinances? To hold on, is it, is it really that specific? And ultimately here, roughly a month ago, maybe we, we asked the questions again, and our town attorney said, wait, don't really, and help me out here if I'm wrong, you don't really have to, uh, produce the ordinance. You can produce a question, a valid question that had to do with the four parts of what we're, what we're doing. Cultivation, sales, you know, the list. I, I think both of us at the time felt a little, it, it had been a little clear up back in the first part of the, of when we started asking questions. Maybe we designed the whole process differently. But what it comes down to in, in my mind, you have this, and there are going to be two sides on this question like there are on any other, any other question. There's going to be somebody that, that, that don't want anything to change our little town and, and be on the, that side. Others will say that our business opportunities, that, you know, running businesses in town, we certainly need, and, and has the right, you know, to, to proceed and do these things. So it's going to come down to a, get, get your side out. But quite frankly, it really doesn't seem to me to make a lot of difference whether you get your side out in November or you get your side out next June at, at the regular town meeting. What it seemed to me was that it was much easier for the town, for the committee, and this, this whole process that we're going through. It just seemed to me that it'd be terribly, uh, well, it'd be much easier to get your kind of non-informed voting public to understand referendum questions with definitions and, and make, make them understand how they felt. Get them to understand how they felt about it and, and see what was going on here. Rather than get to a point where the committee does its work, if they, they're going to hand their work to the select board. Once the select board gets it, we aren't going to read it all in a night and make our decision about passing it on to the ordinance review committee. Bottom line in that process, and I can only be an estimator at it, but it did me a long enough to understand that nothing is going to happen in the process the way it is now. It, it's going to carry through into January, February, and frankly, I don't know what the legislature, new legislature, then something makes. So the thought really seemed to me, and I'm not, I'm the only one, I think, you know, I don't feel the same way, it's, uh, it would be a much easier process, I think, to explain. I know a lot about it now. You folks are people that know an awful lot about it. There are an awful lot of people out there that don't. And to try to get 2,500 people to kind of weed through four different ordinances and public hearings and everything and, and Jay Polnay or something, but that, he, uh, seemed to me it'd be a tougher process to get to point across than it would to have, have this, have this vote take place and, and try to make people understand.
I totally understand everything you're saying, Don. I believe that Mike could actually speak probably better to that than I could. Where, I mean, we saw at the annual town meeting where less than 200 people showed up, how that vote went with there being only three people, like three persons dead on the front, and now we saw carrier store fronts have been run. When you look at the amount of the community that's working, taking care of the children, that potentially can't show up at 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock at a town meeting, potentially it's just the amount of people that could show up on a normal voting day, the day before the town meeting, anyone that came and voted, I mean, any time that binds you, as well as in November specifically, that would be that ability as well. But I think Mark might could speak better to that in some ways off of what you said, I would have to ask.
I can't speak for the committee, but I, I do want to speak here. Um, you know, the committee's done its, its job and, Don, you sat there through most of it. And, and I think the idea behind the, um, having ordinances ready is, I guess my first question to you, if we're going to put this to vote, which personally, I don't have a problem with that come November. Are you guys going to allow us a public hearing or something to educate the people on this? Of the town, so they understand what they're actually voting on besides reading this on a piece of paper? Because the description says basically in town, in town, in town. That's the perception is downtown, downtown. Is the perception of what this states. You, you're west, I'm on your side. So what, what I'm getting at is, first of all, we heard from Christine earlier this year, you know, the, the town voted for marijuana up in the state of Maine, okay? And then all's we've got is headwinds from all around, okay? Including obstruction on the committee, a person on the committee that sat here and admitted that he was there for one reason, just to destroy it. admitted that he was there for one reason, just to destroy it, it didn't happen, hold on here a second, and Christine even said that she felt the town voted, they didn't know what they were voting for originally. So now we're back to this position here, where the language in here says, in the town. Are we gonna supply a map to the people? Because if you've seen the maps, there is no marijuana in the downtown Bethel. I mean, now we're back to landowner's rights issue, just like the wind tower thing, where one guy came in and changed a whole thing that the committee did for a year in this town, on one landowner, and those guys stood up for landowner rights, and Rick was right there, standing up for landowner rights to begin with. And Rick, honestly, no matter what you think of marijuana, I think I would, like, have your respect and your backing on me being able to do something on my own property.
I don't respect or support federally illegal drugs.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Okay, no lies.
Okay, but now, now we end up with these guys leaving the committee, okay? Which he probably shouldn't have been on one to begin with, because of his attitude towards it. And that his attorney shows up, and the next thing is, all of this is going on, okay? I'm just saying, no problem voting, if they have a vote, they go to a town meeting. Because in your town meetings, they don't work right, I'm sorry. Voters can't show up and vote, because they work in this town.
The reason that we had the committee set up the way we did, all of us voted on this.
Oh, yeah.
The reason we did it the way we did, is because we wanted an old general
Yeah, I understand.
...population of people to have different opinions, to be able to get something done. And all that I have heard, and I've heard from a lot of people, is that the people that are pro-marijuana are the ones that have been stonewalling, the ones that don't agree with you. Now, the ad hoc committee is responsible to listen to all of the committee, not just a few.
I agree on that.
And that didn't happen with this committee that we set up to do the job that we wanted them to do.
Do you think people are willing to compromise on anything?
Wait, you...
Absolutely. People try to. I would invite all of these committees...
Okay, do that.
Now, wait a minute.
We're gonna have a little decorum here, as I'm saying...
These guys are compromising up and down, but you get somebody that wants it, exiled, completely banned. They're not willing to compromise, they're on record saying they're not willing to compromise.
But you don't want it completely banned, and nobody's...
Why are we not able to have this course? Why are we not able to have a compromise? Why are we basically, that's not willing to compromise? When I definitely...
All right, hold on.
I'm on video compromise. We were just talking about the odor nuisance policy, and we've compromised on that all over. We're trying to make it work, and people on the committee don't wanna make it work. We wanna have something that works for everybody. We wanna give people this consideration. Okay? People wanna stonewall, I mean, that's an aggressive statement, that we're stonewalling?
That's what I've been told.
Okay, well, guess what? It's a minority group of the committee. How can the majority stonewall the minority?
I don't wanna shut this knee down, but I have the power to do that. Hang tight for just a minute. Is a gentleman here that would like to offer?
Is there one?
Yes, there is. He's waiting for us.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question is, you guys recommended doing that, to save time, correct? To save the ordinance committee time, to save the select board time, make it easier? Is that what you were saying, to clarify?
I think it could possibly could do that.
So, if all four ordinances pass, the committee is back to where it started. They're gonna be doing the same thing, we're gonna be going in March, January, doing these things you already mentioned, we're gonna have to give anyways to help people. So I'm just confused why now we're canceling out all the work the committee's been trying to do, in order to restart this, and then the committee has to go back and rewrite what they, that they would have to do, otherwise then we have to go through the process, the ordinance review committee, and town votes, and stuff. That's gonna have to, let it all get voted down.
Unless I'm way off base here, mine, the intention that I have in my mind, is that the committee could probably continue on with its work.
So we have to have the members that are retiring, who were removed from the committee, before we can resume our work. We were trying to vote on approving a draft we passed on to the review committee, but we've had members stonewall us to this point, and then quit, so now we need a formal revocation of their status as members of the committee, so that we can continue our work. We've been trying to get this done for November. Rick's on record saying he wants to go to an up or down vote in November. So he's stonewalled us this far, so that this can happen in a way that he can try and get it happening the entire time.
And people certainly see things.
Sure, that's fine. I mean, he would otherwise remain on the committee and try to work with us.
Thanks, now I'll take my turn. My name's Matt McCannwith, I'm a lawyer, I've been hired by Mr. Sapani to represent him at this meeting, and I've been to a fair amount of these, and can learn a lot by what you hear at the beginning of the meeting. So one thing I've heard in this meeting so far, is that you guys don't have a lot of extra money to be thrown around. And so although the money that you're talking about, 2,620 dollars is a huge amount of money, it's enough to replace that air conditioner, which is killing the neighborhood. It'd all be a lot more comfortable, all right? It could probably also fix some oak boards that are rotten at the sewage treatment plant that your guy fell through. So, you know, we're talking about money, spending money here, you folks are talking about spending money here, when you've got a guy falling through rotten floorboards. And I think that if you keep the focus on what's important, some of these questions are gonna become a lot easier. So, what I've also heard is from Mr. Bennett, who seems to have a really good grasp on what's going on in this town. He said that the committee knows a lot about this stuff, and I know a lot about this stuff, because I've learned it from the committee. But the community, they don't know that much about this stuff, because they haven't been educated on it. And ladies and gentlemen, you may have noticed, but there is a green wave coming across this country. There are two things, there are three things you can do. You can get swept up by it, or you can get in front of it, and then get on top of it. And there are towns in this state that have done exactly what Bethel is trying to do here, they've done it through committees, they've already written these ordinances, and trust me, I'll tell you, as a lawyer, it's, there's no such thing as plagiarism. It doesn't happen in the world of lawyers. So you can take those ordinances, you can change them for your town, and you can use them. Let the committee do their work. There is evidence in front of you that there were people on that committee that weren't trying to cooperate. And maybe there were people on both sides that weren't trying to cooperate. Maybe it's the...
I'm sorry.
Maybe you guys need to reform the committee a little bit, reorganize. But it sounds to me like the committee has done some work, and I know that they have an ordinance ready to propose right now. So it's, the fruits of their labor need not go unused, and I think that they can make progress, continue to make progress, and see what happens. This landscape is constantly changing. The only thing I think the people of Bethel can know for sure, is that things are changing, and there's a progression here. Even the feds are now starting to talk about not enforcing it. So although it is still federally illegal, it's only a matter of time. It is only a matter of time. And so if you look at places like Colorado, that got to the front of it, they are reaping the rewards of that. And yes, there are two sides of every argument, and I'm not trying to make an argument for that, but I would say, let the committee do their job, and let them finish their work and come forward with the recommendation, and save yourselves 2,100 bucks and get a new air conditioner in the process, fix the old cords.
I'd like to clarify something. I said it was the townspeople that have come to me that have said it was still being stonewalled. Did those people go to any committee meetings? Yes.
And that's kind of an objection, because it's not the townspeople, and I believe you know, prominent people will do that, and what side? They're sitting on it.
It's not that I agree with them.
Because there hasn't been a...
No. They have lost. I've been to every meeting, and other than the people in this room, and the people that sit on this committee, and other than Jared showing up at the meeting before last, there has not been one other person in this town at any of our meetings, and I've been to every one of them. Not one person, not one. You can ask anybody on the committee, no one.
Okay, we're just, we're gonna go around here just a little bit.
I don't disagree with you that it, about, you know, what's the difference bringing your side out in November versus later, but I think that we saw at the annual town meeting with the vote on the medical storefronts, there were a lot of people that did vote that down, that are my friends, and that I talked to, because there wasn't an ordinance to back it, and they were very like, oh, well, it's not that I don't want it, but I wanna know what it's gonna look like. And so that's my fear, if we go to vote without, like, the strategic plan behind the question. And it's so scary to talk in front of this room.
Doing a good tour.
But that's like, I think that's, for both sides, like, we need to be, like, voting on a specific thing, not a general, yes or no. So, it's wonderful.
Ultimately, what, in my understanding of what this vote is, is that you're ultimately going to vote to, but let's say that the ballot was set up so that you've got a yes and a no for cultivation and health board questions. It turns out that you have the vote, and you have two of them passed unanimously, and two were out. It is obvious to me that there's going to be an ordinance produced for those two. I mean, we aren't going to just rule on a referendum vote, you know, with no rule on ordinance, no, so the committee would... My sense of it is, the committee carries on just the way it is right now. They work at it, if they wind up in November with a vote for only two of them, half the work they've earned.
Could you allow the committee to hold a public hearing, to educate the public on the ordinances, and also set up some sort of, I've offered to build a website for them, so they can educate the public on what the committee's doing, and what ordinances would be potentially for them to have, once they start voting, and whatever passes or doesn't, they at least know what it looks like in the future, and the committee can talk to them, so that we can make sure that people know what it looks like.
That's right, Matt, you go along. I don't think the committee can do that.
I made a request for the money to do exactly just that.
I suspect, oh, let me talk, I haven't talked about this at all, I'm living on poetry here. I'll be right at the verge of being done by that time, but if I'm still here, I would recommend that you have a public hearing, as you normally would, on referendum questions. And how does a referendum work? The voters come out at 8 o'clock in the morning, and...
What's open date? Has it been out, or available 30 days prior?
And the trouble nowadays, the towns face, is we, people are apathetic, they don't turn out, that's a problem. Another problem is that when we have two groups, both with opinions, people like me have to work for both sides. It is difficult, because there's such a separation, that it's very difficult to build consensus. And I would view this mechanism as a way to work towards building self-consensus, for the folks together in a room, and having success. Because you would narrow down the options, and then you would know better what everyone in the town, townwide, finds acceptable. And instead of 100 people at a town meeting, you get, how many people do you get in November roughly, usually? See, victims. So, I think just as a mechanism, this is something that you might consider, and I think the town would be well-served. And the town attorney has written the questions, so apparently she thinks they're at least appropriate questions to ask. I think the board feels this is a tough, tough situation, a tough problem to overhead fairly. And I can tell this one sitting here, and I, you know, I haven't been to any of these meetings, but I can tell there's a lot of passion, a lot of feelings, maybe more feelings of listening to each other. This would be a way to work through that.
I feel like if I talk, there's a bunch of people that want to, so I shouldn't...
Okay, Jared, the ballot will be in there.
Okay, well, full disclosure, I'm probably one of the few people here who lobby for marijuana at the national level, which is odd, but the American Legion supports for the treatment of PTSD, so I've been to DC, and it's a position we should take. That being said, we exercise a good neighbor policy, in Bethel, where we always live and I live. I may not be in favor of my personal life, and, but, the committee has worked hard, and no matter what, we wanna inform the populace. They need to understand what they're voting on, whether they vote for it or against it. I'm not saying either way. But the committee's put in too much time. If we go to a November ballot, and I know this may not be the most popular view, some of my own friends, but the reality is, people will just be voting on abstract ideas, they won't know the facts. And if they take it to, so I guess my thought is, let the ordinance committee continue their work, because right now, I sat in on that one meeting, and you guys were working hard, Pat was trying to keep a consensus together, but the reality is, we all acknowledged at the meeting, at least the one I sat in on, Jewel has it on camera, that it's still a work in progress, and it needs to be vetted, because if that ordinance went to vote right now, you'd probably fail, for a few different reasons, technical reasons, it could be worked out. And so if the committee's allowed to work out some of these issues, and the vote, there's public hearings, either support or opposition gets mounted, then that's fair. And in the meantime, if you rush it to November, it may not be fair to the people who've worked on this committee, and put in all this time. And don't get me wrong, I'm not a huge proponent of having it cultivated, I obviously have, we're working on some smell issues in our neighborhood that will get worked out, but the reality is, it may not be fair to everybody. So I kinda take the same perspective Mike does. If it went to a, if it went to a November vote right now, might not get a fair shake, but, and I'm not saying I'd vote for it or against it, okay? But the reality is, it's just trying to be fair to everybody in the committee.
Okay, so see a hand, see a friend.
Yeah, question I have for you, it's, everything's kinda new to me, I've been here a year and a half, almost two now, so it's all kinda new to me, because I really didn't have any major problems, happened to be my neighbor, and I really don't care about the part as far as what's happening, as far as the marijuana goes. The problem that I have is, we have a smell that's so astronomical, we can't come out of the house. And the problem with the smell coming out of the house, that somebody else can't understand, that there's, all the people in the neighborhood are getting the same thing, and obviously, it's a major problem. And the problem I have that's really major, is I got a little girl that's six years old, their playground's equal to the fence area on the back of that. And I understand what you're saying to me, as far as, we're gonna clean it up, we're gonna do this, we're gonna make it happen, so that they process their stuff and do what they gotta do. I don't have a problem with that, I don't. But the problem I do have, is what happens to that little girl five years from now, when we find out that from what she inhaled, I don't think there's anything else to say. And I don't know what I gotta do about it, or how I gotta go about it, if I gotta go to the state, or I gotta go to the federal, I'll do what I gotta do. But I just don't know what else, which way to go about it nicely. And I'm trying, I'm trying. I didn't ask once, I asked twice, now I'm down to the end. I can't go in five. Thank you. Excuse me?
I said I've been here from the beginning.
Okay, okay.
Good.
No lies. Rick, go ahead.
I think, I heard my name mentioned a couple times, and I think I'm being given far too much credit for that. I don't, I don't see how it can be really, committee, when any vote that's taken is an eight to one vote, and maybe it might, it's, maybe it might be eight to two, but not necessarily. So generally sticking to votes are eight to one, or whatever. So I don't think I had any hand in derailing this committee, as much as I would like to, because what I did do was respond to an ad from a Bethel citizen, a year or so ago, which said they were looking for members to serve on a committee to determine the future of marijuana in Bethel. I thought that meant both pro, and those against federally illegal drugs. This gentleman up front mentioned something about the benefit to the town. The cultivation ordinance that's currently written has no benefit for the town whatsoever. I think it charges a hundred dollar minimum fee. The committee refused to put anything extra in for the town. So that's what we're dealing with, and that's why I resigned, and... And I hope you folks will do what you came here to do.
Okay, Pat.
Okay. There's several items that I have to address. Number one, the, I was coming to the committee by accident. I was covering for someone to represent the county. That was my only question there, and then it grew from there. But my understanding was that people were there not necessarily for their personal opinion or feelings of the subject, but for the benefit of the town. That was my feeling. I found out otherwise. And as far as going to November votes, the people without, without a public hearing, the people are going to go there and it's going to be the same as it was in 2016, but nobody knew what it was all about and they just voted for it. If you don't explain to the public what it's all about, and they get here and they read it that day, they have too many questions and they're just going to say no. And I mean, not that we're, the committee is not here just to get the voters to say yes or no, we're here to say, this is the way it's going to be. You vote the way you want to vote. But if they don't have the background, if they don't have the knowledge of what this is all about, it's not going to go the way that it promised it should go. And as far as the ordinance that the committee has come up with, what was just quoted is incorrect. And the reason it's incorrect is because we were told that the town would set fees for what we are considering permits. And that's why we capped it off, where we capped it off, and it's not a hundred dollars. So there's just too many things that are contradicting me here. There's too many of them. And people who don't go to our committee meetings, I feel really should keep them all shut up, if they're not going to come and listen and see what's going on. We have, we, as we have butts, our butts, trying to get this through. And the best way that we can, and we know it has to go in front of the selectmen, we know it has to go in front of the ordinance committee, and we know that it's going to bounce back to us. We know all this. We are not perfect, and the ordinance that we passed in the first time will not be perfect either. But we are doing the best we can. And we're getting nothing but bad stuff. I'm really upset with this.
She says. Let's, let's.
Can I also mention a little bit of the, it's waving.
No, that's the first time I put my hand up. Honestly. Okay. Yeah, May fourteenth, select board meeting. I was so depressed the next day because I felt beat up. And I might like you all individually, but as a select board, I felt like our committee was just kind of not really taken seriously. And like to change, to decide how long we should have a meeting or how long, because we're all volunteers. And I get kind of hurt to think that townspeople are saying that a bunch of us are stonewalling. And Ricky, you have way more influence than you think. I told Bob one night out here, I said, because you guys thought the committee was unbalanced, and I said, Bob, you already have a lot of power. And Bob, he said, I don't have power. I said, you have a lot of influence. And you guys do. It's, can't help it, you've been here a long time. But get this up. Get up. Yep.
Okay, get word, word.
Want to get up?
Oh, sure.
It is. What is it? That is, you were given this much when you started. I haven't read any word, but I know a lot. This is what I've compiled since then. Since, since when? Since we started a year ago. And I don't care if this was lollypops. We put our hearts and souls into it. I probably spent twenty-five hours on the phone in just the last two weeks. I've talked to Kittery before this, I've talked, I had Bearfield stuff before Sunday, I just wanted to. I had the whole, they have a draft. I've talked to Farmington, I've talked to Freiber, I've talked to South Paris, South Paris passed four. They put everything together. So far, we're the only town that has separated them, because we thought that was fair. Not like the state vote in 2016, if they separated things, it wouldn't be like this now. And I'm confused, I love your listening still, but Dawn said, I don't know where this is coming from, but it doesn't feel like it's just mutual, the idea of that. And I can understand if I was a citizen and I didn't think it was right, I'd come and say, can we request this and can we request that? On June sixth, there was sort of this request from Article forty-three of Kingfield. And Rick asked the committee, basically Article forty-three was a Kingfield article where they wanted to vote, kind of like what we're talking, only they just had one question. And Rick proposed that we do that. And the committee voted it down. And maybe some townspeople might think that that was starting, but it was our belief. I believe that the town voters have the right to choose. And I don't know if people are afraid will give them something too reasonable, and maybe they will think it's okay or what, but they have the right to choose. We're trying to create wording, and I mean, ordinance are confusing anyway, but we're trying to create the choices for them. And I'm confused to think that, how can a referendum in November, and I don't know if it would be four questions, well, Mary Costigan suggested those four questions, and there's some type of, but, but then Dawn says the committee could keep working. And Rick, back when he proposed it, also during the May fourteenth select board meeting here, when he proposed to disband the committee, well, he suggested it. And I understand his passion. I admire your passion and your tenacity, you don't give up. I get that. But, and then to say it would save the committee time, I don't really think that that's a worry. And so how can, we have referendum questions, and then how's that helping, like, to avoid work for the committee, but to say the committee should keep working? I'm confused. I am confused.
If you wanted to take the time off, I guess you could take the time off between the referendum and the election.
Or, or... What you're suggesting though, to disband the committee and table it until November, Rick, that's what the overall objective is of the referendum. Some people are so grandiose here, I haven't heard anything about this, I don't have an opinion, I don't know anything. But the question I would have is, if the town narrowed some things down, it would be lots of work on the things that it seems that they would, that's all I was...
What if that we don't? What if we...
With zero understanding of what... You were in favor by wasting the last year and a half of your life while you've been working on these issues.
I think the question is, what do these questions gain us? Right? What do these, what does answering these questions gain the town?
Perhaps a picture of the direction that the townspeople look at.
Again, but a year ago, in this very room, we selected a ten-person ordinance committee that after, after it was announced, Rick Whitney took upon himself to push the selectmen to make it an eleven-person committee, to specifically accept Wayne Delant in to that committee. Specifically, you actually didn't even vote within that. You were singing from the boat because you didn't see the necessity.
Well, yeah, there were other reasons.
I still have to know. I just want to know too, also, if, if, I mean, you guys have power. I hope I'm not across all day tomorrow, because I can have plenty of it in me, pretty depressed, and I'm not most of the time. I just felt so beat up and unsupported and disregarded. And, and I asked before, is, I asked one day, asked more, is our committee really valued? And I loved your middle-of-the-road stuff, and you said, well, usually we put stuff together and we let people talk for a while and get to know each other, and, and, and then, but after, like, I'm a slow processor, and then you said you did think of disbanding it, and this was just last spring. I'm a slow processor, but by the afternoon, I said, that was my answer. We're not down to that much if we could be disbanded like that. We weren't, why didn't you come and ask us? Hey, do you guys think we should do this? You've been asked. It was proposed, we talked about surveys, we went around and around and around.
We can try to educate ourselves.
And, and decided it was the best to do it. But so, if they don't rule, would the committee be disbanded, or would they be still making the rest of the ordinances, or what if you...
We'd certainly discuss it tonight, and I'd see this committee being disbanded.
Thank you.
I had that question also. If this goes through in November, a week to then make ordinances, or is the town attorney going to do that?
You're still going to carry on with your ad hoc committee, and you're going to produce a document, documents, come to the selectmen, the selectmen are going to do their read on it, and they're going to pass it on to an ordinance review committee. That's what, that's what the process here is. That's the one thing that most, most every towns person in Beaufort and towns, you understand, process, process, process. It gets very discouraging because it takes a long time, and it's a lot of these kinds of meetings, and it's a lot of, a lot of public hearings. And believe me, I've sat through a lot of them, and you have a public hearing and you go, huh, nobody showed up from the other side. So we have a one-sided public hearing, and a matter of a few weeks later, you can't tell a paper because, why didn't I hear about that? I would have been, and that's the, I'm just happy that it's, that's out there in, in the, in the public. But again, understand the questions, if they, it's hard to drive home to, I know people, I've talked to people, and I ask, I say, you understand what this is about? Well, not really, I guess there's some committee. Yeah, there is. Have you ever watched it on tape? No? I have to vote on it someday, right? Yeah, 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 you have it. Do you, do you understand the business in what's going on here in this community? People, you know, trying to, trying to create businesses? Well, some of the part is, I mean, that's, that's the kind of the stuff that the committee and the general public here have to get to those voters and make them understand that there's more to this than this, this simple one-sided answers to things. And I, quite frankly, I, I believe that can happen between now and November, and do it much more simply with four questions and definitions, and all of us working hard to make our neighbors understand what's going on. And if it came November and the vote was unanimous, all four asked, the committees got their work all cut out, all of this, there's going to be no, there's going to be nothing, nothing passed in and, and worked on and decided through our process as we know it before January, February. It's just going to take that long, go through select board screening of things, we see something, we pass it back to the committee. Another month goes by, it's just that way. And the ordinance review committee is going to get it, and they're going to try to match it up with all the other ordinances that we have, so that there's no discrepancy between...
What ordinances do we have in town?
We had a great meeting here, I can tell you.
So the, the paper has posted the, the different categories and the explanations for all four categories. It's already been in the paper, it was always, and it was also put in there that, that we meet, of course that has changed, but our meeting times and that the public is invited. And so we also plan on putting that in at least one or two more times to give the public the opportunity to read the explanations for all different categories. I mean, we have been trying to get the word out there, and we will continue to try and do that.
We have for twenty years. It's just amazing how many people won't listen or don't seem to care. Here's the rest of us.
I just got something real quick here. I don't have a problem myself with everyone voting in November, I'd better have the whole town vote on it. But instead of just the definition in there, you know, there's setbacks, right? I mean, can you put a map with stuff so that people understand that it's pretty much zoned out of Beaufort? Or can we have a public hearing on it prior to that, until a bunch of us can get up in street curbs?
Here's a map that's been created already from...
I understand that's just a graph.
What I'm saying is, people are educating on what they're voting.
There's already a map.
Absolutely, that's the whole deal.
So, like I said, I have no problem with that, but I would prefer a public hearing where people could come, whoever wanted to could come. Have your map on a projector, this is where it isn't, this is what's, the setbacks are lost.
I totally agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, look, we're going to do a couple more questions. The clock is running, and we have a lot of work to do, and we're going to have a vote to take, so...
This is quick.
Be quick, yes.
I heard you say, like, it's a long process going back and forth. Well, if we have four, well, we have five to go now, why wouldn't we just continue this process? Because it sounds like it's going to take it, going back and forth from now till next June.
Fine.
I think...
Open vote in June.
I mean, it's...
Okay, but real quick.
I just want to ask why it's been considered reasonable to spend money on this vote when we haven't been allowed to spend money on education? We've been repeatedly turned away when requesting funds or an opportunity to host a public hearing to inform, to inform citizens that are interested in learning. We've been doing the best we can with the meetings that we've been having reserved the space for, because we weren't allowed to meet here as often as we wanted to. So we had to have an unofficial meeting so that we could actually have the conversations that we needed to have. We asked people to cover those meetings, but we're not able to, we weren't able to actually advertise until we got, you know, more votes. We need an opportunity to educate people. It sounds like we're not being given that opportunity because the committee's too one-sided. We can bring in people that are professionals, that have an objective understanding about how these things work. Public safety, I tried to get what you called for additional applicants for the committee. I had a doctor come and apply. He was not selected. Wayne Delant was put on the committee instead of the doctor. We don't have the perspective that we need to educate people within the committee. We've been struggling to do that because the people that have that information, that would be viewed as an objective source of it, weren't selected for the committee, even when there was a call to bring them in. So I don't know why we're now saying, oh, it's okay, it's a good idea for us to be able to educate and have a public hearing. We've been asking for that the entire time, and we've been sitting, we've been told that, no, the money's not available, no, it's not an option.
I think traditionally, traditionally we've had ad hoc committees, we simply haven't funded them.
Is there a need for education or not? I mean, you yourself said you've learned a lot.
I think I've been to fifteen meetings, and I think you've heard me say more than once, education, education. We've got to get this across, it's for your part in this, and what you want, and what Rick's part in, and what he wants. It's about making people understand what both sides been...
So can we have four? We need that.
Why don't we spend time educating instead of wasting time and money trying to get people to vote? And then having a re-vote next year? Why don't we educate, why don't we spend that time and that money on educating the public?
Okay. Yep. This is, you, you get, you get the final.
All right. Well, I was paid to be here, so I think that's fair. So the first thing I want to make to the members of the committee is that this is a complex issue no matter what. And I think that all of you probably have experience explaining, trying to explain complex issues in simple terms to people. It, it takes a lot of work, and it takes probably more time than explaining something complex to somebody in complicated, difficult terms. When you try to simplify something that's complex, it doesn't make it easier, it makes it harder to explain and get across. And so I think at some level, your mission has failed from the beginning. The other thing is that you're adding a step into a process that's already started. And so I would ask you to... And so I would ask you to consider, why not just let the process continue and then potentially ask these questions later on? I don't see what they get you right now other than some leverage over the committee, frankly. Um, and, and I think that there is some, some signs that there's been heavy political maneuvering on the committee. And that's not to say that there was anything untoward or anything underhanded, but like you said, people are passionate about these issues, they're fighting hard for them, and I wouldn't be surprised at all if there were some influential people exerting some influence on this important issue. The committee is not done. I think that the most telling testimony or whatever you wanna call it that I've heard tonight is from the committee members who are begging you to let them keep working. They think that they can really cover some ground. They think they gained some traction and they want some time to show you what's in that backpack. Finally, I think that as elected officials, you have an obligation of stewardship. It's not just doing what you think is right, it's doing what your, what your constituents think would be right. And your constituents don't know enough to know what is right right now. They need to be educated, just as you've been educated, Mr. Duff. So I would say that as stewards, you'd be short, you'd be short cutting that system by not letting the process go forward as you originally set it forth and not take this meeting nature, which I think could be considered a shortcut. Thank you all for your time and for your hard work. I'm sure you'll get paid enough for it.
Okay, we appreciate all the input and all of it.
Can I finish? Yeah, you can start. I know I've got to finish because everybody started jumping on me about Stonewall.
Okay.
I might say so.
Whether or not people in town have gone to your meetings or not, they're coming to me saying that they have an opinion and they have a right to that opinion, just as you have your right to your opinions. This ad hoc committee was put together so that it was a diverse group. It's not a diverse group from what I'm seeing anymore. And I really am sad that it has come to this juncture. We have people that we assigned to this committee resigning because they don't feel that they have had their right to say how, what they feel. And if that is how the education part is gonna go about, then I don't think, I, I think we'd be wasting everybody's time by doing that.
Laurie, these have all been taped. Have you looked at some of these things?
No, I haven't. Wait a minute, I'm not finished.
I'm just asking.
Okay, let, let her, uh, we, we have to move on yet. We'll, we'll do the board calling, that's, that's it.
No, I haven't seen any of the tapes at all. I have talked to a few people that are on this committee. And I have been sitting back at the meetings and reserving my judgment until we get everything worked out. But when I started to say something tonight, I got jumped all over because I voiced an opinion of certain townspeople. Now, if that is, is that how people are treated at the meeting? That they get jumped all over because they voiced their opinion? You know, you have to look at all of the things that are going on, not just what your personal opinions are. And I felt like I was being pushed back because I didn't say what you wanted to hear. That was the, that was how you people made me feel sitting here in this chair tonight.
Well, that's why people resigned because they felt that they weren't getting it. But everyone on the committee does not necessarily, is not necessarily for any of this.
Right.
We don't know everybody's personal feelings on that committee. I mean, we knew a couple of them maybe, but the rest of us, we might have different feelings on it.
Right.
Potentially people change their mind.
So it's not to say that we're all for it and there's two against.
That's, that's all fine. That's all fine.
Potentially people change their mind after being on the committee for a while that maybe weren't know, that then potentially push towards against. You know, people after education could potentially change their minds.
I said that.
Andy, what?
Yeah, yeah, I just, uh, sat here and listened to everything. I agree with quite a bit of what both sides actually say, um, which may sound kind of confusing because how can you possibly agree with both sides in a, in a situation like this? But I think both sides made some pretty good points and where I, my thought is that these four questions are designed to try to, to try to tackle some of those points. I think it seems like both sides are aware that, you know, maybe that, maybe the committee's selection wasn't the done best way it could have been done. Um, one of our, what, what we just, I, I think we've maybe explained this in the past, but Beffel was a 49, 51% vote, right? Roughly in favor. So, so we tried to represent that the best we could, you know, with, with the committee. Um, we were probably naive in thinking that we could actually accomplish that. That's, as, as, as many people out here have said, that's actually a possible task to truly know. Um, that, it, the word abstract was used out here, um, for this, and my feeling was that, that the original vote was kinda abstract. It was just, to, to me, that original vote was basically a if you wanted or not kind of thing. And this narrows it down a little bit more to, to give everyone more, more direction. Um, I don't anticipate or really want to dissolve the committee. I don't wanna waste all the work that's been done and it, I guess in my personal opinion, the committee wants to continue to meet if we vote to vote this, then I don't see why we can't allow that. But, you know, I would say that if the town came and voted and said no to all four of these, then yeah, we, we probably shouldn't have a committee because there's probably not gonna be an ordinance signing. But if the town votes to approve one or more of these, which based on the previous vote, they may do. I mean, they, they, they voted in favor of it once, but it was a very close vote. And to me, that question was, was relatively generic. So to me, there might have been people who voted in favor of that because they wanted two of these, but not all four of them. Or maybe, maybe it'll go the other way around. Maybe there'll be more people, maybe people will understand this better and say, you know, maybe the vote will be much different. But I, I think we really need to go with this vote. I think we should have done this a long time ago before we maybe started this committee. And if, I think if we had done that, the committee would have had better direction and wouldn't have felt like they were wasting as much time. Um, y'all, you certainly have, everyone needs to put their opinions out there and, um, you know, I think that there are very, very, very varying opinions, I don't know what a great term to use, but, um, with this matter. There are a lot of people right in the middle of it. There are people who are dead set against it, there are people who are dead set for it, and there are a whole lot of people in the middle of it. Um, you know, there are, there are a lot of people, I think we probably have some in the island who just, you know, if my neighbor wants to smoke it, that's fine, but I don't wanna smell it over here. Even finding that, finding the middle ground, to me, these, these help outline that. If, if the town votes in favor of all four of these, then the committee just keeps going the way they can. If the town votes in favor of two of these, then the committee can focus in on, on those two. I'm certainly all for having, um, if we can do it, I think, which I think we do, a public hearing for some of these things. If we wanna do that, that's, that's a pretty low cost way of getting information out. You know, those in favor show up and give their opinions and facts and stuff to support, to support it, and those against it show up and, and, and no one fight against it. And putting this to town gives us, gives us a chance to do that, in, in my mind. Um, I just, I, I, I think a lot of, a lot of the concerns that are voiced out there on both sides are, are probably concerns that both sides have maybe for different reasons. But to me, this, this addresses it some. And as far as the cost goes, if we're gonna spend money on something, it ought to be spending money on something that the entire town, you know, benefits from and uses and affects. And this is a big deal, you know, this is something that we'll, we'll have to deal with for years down the road. And, um, you know, whether it be against it and maybe we miss a vote on something, or whether it be for it and we get people complaining about the smell or something, then we'll have to, and those are the things that I understand and we worked out in ordinance and I think probably have been addressed as, as I understand.
And that's the whole thing. The, the town people that are going to you, understand that our job is to make an ordinance. It has nothing, absolutely nothing.
That's what I explained to them. That's what I explained to them.
Yes. We're not here because of our personal feelings. I mean, that can be taken into consideration, but it has no bearing what the outcome is. It's only to make an ordinance for these different categories. And I think that's what people don't understand as far as the committee goes. They think that because of our personal feelings, that we're influencing something in one direction or another. And we're not. We're making ordinances and they are gonna vote on those ordinances.
Right.
Okay, I need a motion on, uh, just, um, yes, one way or the other. I guess.
I'm sure. I, I make a motion that we do, um, that four persons in the family and, I don't know whether we, um, vote and that we still encourage the U.I. and the committee to work on what they're working on and, for.
I'll accept that.
Just for the record.
I don't accept this as the will of the town. I mean, we're looking at it very small.
Okay, we're, we got a vote going here.
Yes, you do, totally, but it's not representing the will of the town.
Could you read that back?
Yes. Well, it's moved to go ahead with the referendum vote and to encourage the committee to work on what they are working on now and move forward for a second.
Well, that basically makes them an obsolete committee towards November.
Okay, please.
I know, I'm sorry. It's very hard to judge.
I'll be leaving next year. You can sit here.
Yeah, like, that's never gonna happen.
The, uh.
I have so much work.
Okay, we have, uh, we have a motion, uh, exactly seconded. All in favor of that motion. We're all gonna get out of the committee.
Okay, so this is my question now. These are the questions that are gonna be on the ballot. I have to know this because I have to order ballots by the 24th. And they're gonna be worded exactly this way.
Those are the type.
Oh, to see if the town.
Town halls.
Yeah, yeah. Well, read just as I'm on a record then to see if the town will vote for those.
That's, that's the high date.
And these. Look, I will not put those on the ballot, but I would, can put them in each ballot group.
Yes.
Because that may be way against the ballot.
Can they be handed out with absentee ballots?
Yes. It can be handed out with absentee ballots and I will put them in each group.
And we will find, find a way to disseminate that.
And what do you want to do?
You can't get a machine?
We got a machine that we don't call, right?
No.
Do we have to, do I, do we have to, um, request the public hearing or is that something that's automatic or how does that work?
We, we will request the public hearing.
Oh, can those two members be taken off the committee?
They are off.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, they, they officially.
Are you gonna replace them?
Why, why go through that, right? It's not really.
I, I think they've got a handle on what, what they're doing.
I think the committee's done a great job.
The committee enables to educate, um, so am I able to build a list and, um, to educate the people in case, um, what ordinances they propose if something passes? And let people know when meetings are, show them the maps, you know, give people the education tool.
They'll say draft them, hold them?
Oh, I'm not sure really if that's something that the committee should, should sanction.
Uh, what about a private citizen? As a private citizen, we can do as we want, right?
Absolutely. Whatever you want.
Laurie Swain. Laurie. Laurie, I want to apologize if I reacted in any way that offended you. I think most people, I know myself, I was shocked at what you have heard. I have attended every meeting except for one and I, I was shocked. What I hear mostly is the other way, but, and I try to be as fair as I can be.
Well, I see thousands and thousands of people will be here.
No, I am, I am.
And I have people comment to me saying these things. I have to address them.
No, I, I respect that, but I'm sorry if my reaction, my reaction was shocked, that's all.
Okay, we got to get on with these things here. Could you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, I was gonna suggest that the town endorse a website with the ad hoc committee. What did you want your own personal respond? You have your public, uh, hearing here on, on the front row, any questions?
That, that's, that's the way I would understand this. Okay, I need discussions surrounding the possibility to be contained. And then?
Chair and I'll see you on Wednesday. Good deal.
Leave that open.
As Dave is here, he is.
David is on vacation, so he asked, uh, in order to keep things forward, he presented this evening.
I'm glad so many of you have done it. Thank you. He paid about $200 to send to one of our rescue personnel to class. This would allow training to occur here and a cost of, if I remember correctly, $85, $65 for the work in 20 for the class, um, and you have to pay the instructor $200. Going off memory because I don't have that in front of me. But in order to offset that, it would be people coming from other, uh, rescue services in the area to do these training sessions. He did ask though that the revenue that is generated from this training center be put into a revenue account, I mean, it's likely to have to happen next year, but to be spent on upgrading their equipment at the rescue station. This would help alleviate some on the taxpayers of what revenue they would make. It'll probably take a year to cycle out to know exactly how much revenue they're gonna make and how much expenses they're gonna do. They have to keep track on paper temporarily. If the, you approve this and they make $600, we can tell David he has $600 to spend on, on upgrading equipment down there, that's $600 less going up to the taxpayers in, in the annual warrant. To me, it was a win-win situation. We have training people down here that are interested, oh, sorry, the personnel that are interested becoming training people. We have the facility down there, it works.
So you ask the question all the time, cost? I think you explained it pretty well. There really shouldn't be any that might be spent.
Absolutely.
How about liability? Is there any?
They, they are certified teacher, so I mean, what they get taught from that trainer, they give them the certificate of support and basically posting it, you know, make a little bit of money, yeah, pay your instructor, like, people paying to come and use our, use our facility, you know, our water, you know, our electricity, whatever you wanna say. It's kinda like a host, I guess you could say, that makes a little bit of money.
Okay, we heard enough? Motion?
I'll make the motion that we allow JP's company to pursue the Beffel Land and Beffel ambulance to become a training center. to become a training center.
Okay, move it seconded, any further, discussion. Very nice, I'll vote in favor.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Silent body bids, truck three, all of the words, looks pretty straightforward to me. Are you done sweating back there, Scott, would you like to walk along?
No, you called on me now, it's gonna be worse.
At least there's nobody here.
Yeah.
Sorry for that.
Thank you, thank you very much. We, we did solicit several different bidders, um, we had, we had one bid.
You solicited, uh, several, but you only got one bid in, okay?
And that's this bid for sixty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Four ninety-five, and that is just for the body and the plow?
Body?
You've already got the truck. Yes, you guys approved the truck at the last meeting. So that truck that we approved didn't have a body or a plow attached to it? No, no, just the chassis. Really, I'm sorry, I missed that, um, wow, okay.
So in other words, if we don't approve this one bid, we wrap it up.
Cab chassis, yeah.
Cab and chassis.
Yeah, um, it's, it's the way we, way we've always done, that we, we buy cab chassis and then we, we put our gear on.
Okay.
Look at it this way, if we spend the sixty-eight thousand, we'll get crucified for that, if we don't buy it, buy the cab chassis.
Crucified for that, too, yeah, um, no, that's... That's my question. No. It's not gonna back.
Scott, this, this seems reasonable in your mind, I mean, you certainly rounded the budget.
Yes, um, and, and this number is less than what they both gave me for a budget number in February when they produced that, which, which typically it usually is, they, they give you a number in January, February, which is normally high, and then when it comes down to who wants more, they take a little more off.
Would you like to save something or something?
No, you don't have, you don't have a, um, a plow, an extra plow and an extra body over there that has come off of a, a, a different truck or something?
It's currently on a truck at this time, we, we talked about moving the plow over through, uh, the way things work in the past, we, we've usually rotated the gear on two trucks, the last truck, and it seen the second truck, so we, we put fresh gear on that one.
Okay.
This truck would have seen, it's been on the, the one truck, the gear that's on this truck right now, it's only been on one, but we've had some problems, we've had some accidents, things have been tweaked and re-strattoned and tweaked again and re-strattoned, and we figured some of the gear right now looks just better off, just to, if we get rid of the truck, we, we put a new wing tower on this truck, um, normally we, we would move the plow frame, the wing tower, well, the dump bodies usually go with the, with the chassis anyway, we take the plow frame, the wing towers off, plow and the wing.
But we, we still haven't got rid of the truck that we replaced, right?
No.
Did you, you guys use that, right?
Uh, well, it's, it's, it has engine issues right now, leaking issues right now, we haven't dared to ask to get rid of it with issues that were happening with other trucks in the fleet right now, um, we still have not got our ton truck back, we lost that, uh, that went to the dealership January fifth, um, so right now, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to hang on to what we've got until we get, we're having trouble with one of the other big trucks, until we get that ironed out, I don't wanna ask you to get rid of anything from now.
So if you were to get rid of it, you would just be getting rid of the old prop assembly and body, and you guys probably already transferred that a few times, I'm guessing, that plow and the body, it's been used on another truck?
The, the, the truck that we're hanging on to right now, yes, this, this makes a second chassis, it's been on, um, we debated if the numbers, depending on how the numbers came in, as to whether we would keep the plow that we have on this truck, we could get another, another truck out of this block.
So you don't feel that, you feel that a new plow and new body would be better for this new truck than to utilize something that we already have because of the mechanical issues that you encounter? And am I stating that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just making sure I got it straight.
If we don't, do you have an extra truck or?
No.
I know I talked with you at one point about, should we keep this truck?
Right, right, we, we, we do not have a, we do not have a backup, we do not have a spare, um...
Do you know what we would, what we'd, I mean, usually we don't get that much, so...
Uh, no, the last one, the last one we got rid of, uh, totally equipped with a sander, and we had ten grand, ten, ten to twelve grand.
Yeah.
For the complete setup, um, and we, we, we tried several times and everybody wants them, but they want them dirt cheap, nobody was willing, it's like, man, at the time, set up, set up the minimum bid of ten grand, twelve grand, middle bid, nobody, nobody would buy, I think we bid like twice, three times, I think, on that one?
I don't think that's any different than what other towns do.
So my, my point was, is that when you get that little, if the trucks don't run it, you can still use the backup, I mean, my truck is a spare, but that means we have that bit.
The, the truck that this one's gonna replace, we, we won't see this, this truck till January, February, till, you know, we'll be plowing part of the season anyway with this truck.
You won't need it.
Yeah, I won't need it.
We have to read that.
You're a little bit girl. Okay, motion?
This is the... This, this bid is a little higher than last year's bid, because this is a blind dump body sander, it's called an all-season body, um, and last year, we put a regular dump body, put a hawker sander in the back of it.
Okay.
This thing, everything is built into, built into one, um, we have two trucks like it right now, if you want a sand truck, you lift the plate, the event chain is exposed, if you want a dump truck, you drop the plate, it's, 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 it's a little higher due to that fact, yes.
Do you like that kind of body better?
Uh, we do, um, we didn't ask about it last year because discussion, we decided that we should keep at least one hawker sander in the fleet, um, the all-season bodies do have their, I'm not sure what the right word, but, uh, they do have a few faults sometimes, depending on icy conditions, um, you can't back up with a, with a side dump body, you, you're going forward, you put chains on, go forward no matter what, sometimes some of the dirt hills, you cannot drive up a dirt hill, you need to back up a dirt hill, that's why we decided to keep one truck as a hawker sander, people, the back goes, we do it too.
Okay, you have a motion?
I make the motion that we go with the...
Second on that? Move the second, any further, discussion? Very nice, all in favor? One deal. We can go where it's cool and we can find a place. Okay, last...
I'm on my nose, it's cool there.
Recommend access to county town manager David Holt. Okay. Must have done this once.
The CMO.
No, 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 it's for the assessors, the assessors.
Oh, okay.
Selective sign first, duty assessors sign last, please.
Gotcha.
I'm crazy, I know what I'm doing.
We understand it a couple of times.
We understand that.
None of you done.
I don't know, I haven't been before, but there's, before you guys can draw, there's some of the...
Yes.
All bunches now.
Okay, so...
I know a company that has two hawker sanders, so...
Yes.
I make the motion that we, um, we assign the taxes.
I'll second that.
Move the seconded, any further discussion? Very good, all in favor?
Okay, so when you get these, there's two of them that you find, sign and talk, two pages, double time, last page of the assessment.
All right, so we got that taken care of, uh, okay, H, approve Thanksgiving Day, five K, turkey drum race, I'll take one on my day.
That's your annual request for passivity, Mason.
Motion two, approve the turkey drum race.
I'll second.
Seconded, any further discussion?
It's quite a group.
Very none, all in favor of the turkey drums, right?
Okay. Only two quick ones.
I, I...
You should have the cabin that way.
Approve closure of office on Thursday until the fourth, M.M.A. convention.
I think, should I stand for this? No, okay, all seconded.
Okay, move the seconded, that's kind of a usual thing as well, uh, any further discussion, very none, all in favor? That's some real money, okay, approve cardiac monitor purchase. I think David had a, answered at a, uh, one seat, discussion, and...
That's your policies, your CIP, that's approved at town meeting, it should be probably two motions, one, not to send without the bid because it is over ten thousand dollars, and then two, to accept that, that proposal.
How many companies make these?
Very, very few.
They, this particular company was pretty gracious too, I mean, they, they allowed us quite a, quite a, quite a...
I was supposed to thirty thousand, but I'm not prepared for it.
It seemed like it was twenty something.
But some, some of that was from the old monitors, but then, I think there was another, there was maybe ten or fifteen on, on top of the...
Yeah.
Okay, this is a couple of motions, I guess.
I make the motion that we waive the bid process on the monitor.
I'll second. Move the seconded, waive the bid process on the monitor purchase, all in favor of that, okay, take that taken care of, town. Motion to approve. Make motion to approve the purchase.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so we voted, uh, just in the bid, right?
We voted to waive the bid process, now you have to vote to approve the purchase.
I make the motion to approve the bid.
There's an amount on there, I remember, right?
Total amount is seventy thousand, I'm about thirty seven.
Thank you. I'm asking if we're using the phone one dollar or not, two seven thousand.
Bears?
Yeah.
Okay, move the seconded, fuck it up, yeah, all in favor? They should have stuck around, see how, how we spend money.
Yes.
Four, town clear.
Just quickly wanna update you on thirty day notices, I sent out about three hundred fifty of them, they expire on August fifteenth, uh, we're down to two hundred and eleven right now, I have today, so we've done quite a few years of it, so that's up a little bit from the last couple of years, it's up by about a hundred. That's it, I already talked to you about voting stuff, so, thank you.
Report to town managers?
Well, you got two in the room and neither one wants to talk, it's a rare day when you got two town managers that don't want to talk. I'm sorry, do you want to talk?
You all talked, don't you?
Let's go to school.
I never talk. Well, we went through two and a half days worth of training with David, and he's pretty well set to go.
Oh, sorry, I don't know about that, but you were very gracious and informative and it was a real treat to me to meet the staff, uh, very confident, likable crew, I'm very, very pleased to be with them and be able to spend some time with them, it's just, all that's good, and, you know, I have been very impressed with you folks, the serving as a store employee, it's helping and, but you folks have the town's best interest at heart and I've been very impressed with how you handled a, you know, a little bit of a tough meeting, so proud to serve with you people, uh...
Selectment concerns, comments, ideas, goals?
Christine, I wanna say a little bit, thank you, you, we're on, so, there you go, no, I appreciate it, oh, I, I have enjoyed my time as a beltless life person because of the position that you are in, you have gone above and beyond with the help that you've given us.
That's my job, that's my job.
It wasn't just your job, though, you, you, you did it with class. I appreciate that. Do I have to say, thank you?
I would, I echo what Laurie says, I appreciate the, uh, I, David, I'll, I'll try to not, not do it to you too much, but the, the Sunday night text messages, the phone calls, or Saturday, or, you know, my schedule is kinda different than everyone else's, and, you know, working nights sometimes, days sometimes, and it's nice to, you know, Christine was always very good about answering, pretty much no matter what time of the day it was, because that was the time of day that I was awake and thinking about things. Um, I, I appreciate that a lot, I did have, I had one concern, that's, that, the taxpayer brought to my attention, um, and it's pretty minor, um, you're, I guess, that we paid for a convention or something next week, or next month, it's, I think it was in September or March or something, I don't know, very much, it's, for, for, were you going to, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe this person was, I told him I would bring it up, uh...
I can't, I see, they did.
Yes, I think that's...
You did not pay for that, Gardner paid for that.
Okay, perfect.
Actually, I paid for it, Gardner reimbursed me.
Okay.
And actually, the convention this week, the institute, Gardner paid for his law money, you know, the pay order.
That's good, mate.
I would never put that on you.
Well, I didn't think you would, and I just, but I just wanted an answer to give.
Yes, no, no.
To give, so, no, yeah, but I do, I do think you did a, a good job and I appreciate you.
I wish you, I would want to lock you into a position.
You don't want to leave.
None of us want you to leave, but we understand why you are doing what you're doing, so, well, I would...
Not before you look at this.
Yes.
I just, we, we certainly heard Representative Ted's comments on, uh, she certainly sees this as an issue with any, any other people, we see this as an issue.